We are back, and before we take up our next item, which will be the continuation of the year amendments, I believe we have some good news to impart. Do we?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mac Graham, Assistant County Administrator. John Mail is with me as well. We just got back from Palm Bay, where the governor announced that we are going to be receiving two grants: 12.5 million for Port Salerno, Newman Rovia, and then another million for the S-1 canal enhancements. So, yes, very good news.
Fantastic.
So 12.5 million for Port Salerno, Newman Rovia?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Septic?
Yeah.
Program?
Yes.
Fantastic.
John Mail, Environmental Resource Administrator. So the S-1 canal is a... That project is a project taking an existing county-owned conveyance system, where we've got a little bit of real estate on the far side of where we have access to that's got a significant exotic removal issue. And so we were kind of looking at ways to try to address that, and then we had a partner come forward and suggest the concept of doing a channel enhancement within that drainage canal, so using a conveyance system to achieve some water quality outcomes while also addressing the exotic removal element to that area. So they're going to do that by creating some benching, meandering the stream, putting some material in the stream that's a bioactivated media that helps remove nutrients. And the neat thing about this concept is when all the dust settles and we get through the procurement, we believe we'll have a private-public partnership where the county is contributing about $200,000 for a $2 million-plus project. And it's also going to be the first time where we've partnered with FDAX to fund a regional project that involves agricultural drainage. That's kind of a new thing with the state of Florida is, you know, they've tightened up best management practices as much as they feel they can, and there's still issues to be addressed. And so the concept is, hey, let's fund some regional projects where we deal with that water as a public, and we're going to be one of the first partners in a project like that.
Was that part of the resilience study that we received?
It was part and parcel to a county-wide water quality needs assessment that we updated in 2020. That's where we identified the opportunity to do some channel enhancement, which would put water quality features into existing drainage. And so this will be the first project where we actually do something in that program.
Great news. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, fantastic. Good work.
And it certainly is a big deal for the Newman Rovia Septic to Sewer Project. That's... We've been, you know, working on that for several years, so that'll make a significant difference in that neighborhood. So we'll be bringing back to that program and what we anticipate any assessments might need to be on that to get that... Our goal was to get it under $10,000 per resident.
And we'll have to rebid that, right?
That's correct.
I think we're talking about 1,000 homes, right?
Yeah.
1,000 proper... 850 properties.
850 homes.
That's fantastic.
That is a big deal.
Excellent job, as usual.
What are the bids coming in like these days for Septic?
Let's keep this positive. No, they have the...
Out of the sewer.
No, they have come up. We've been anticipating, you know, we're looking to keep our projects on the goal that you've set. Prices have gone up on utility projects over the last several years. You know, after the great... You know, after COVID, they went up by about 50%. They've still been going up about 10% per year, but not at the rapid rate they did a few years ago. So we're adjusting to it.
Great. Okay, let's take up number... Public hearing number four, which is an year-based amendment 24-01 preamble.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Jen and Nobby, Senior Planner with the Growth Management Department. And I have Clyde Doolin, Comprehensive Planning Administrator, with me. So this is a request to reopen the public hearing for Chapter 1 preamble of the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan based upon the 2024 year. And the main changes in Chapter 1 were relating to the residential capacity methodology. And since the vote that you took this morning on Chapter 4 wants to keep the language as it currently exists in the comp plan today, the changes in Chapter 1 will be the same direction, to keep it as it exists today. And let me go to that page.
Page 1317.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So all of this striking underline in Section 1.7b here will not... We recommend, based on your direction, that it be removed and the text remain as it is today. And then in 1.7c, the same sort of direction. But with the highlighted language here, we recommend that it's the 10 and the 20-year planning period and that the 15-year planning period would not be specified and that the 10 and the 20-year is consistent with Florida statute. So that concludes our overview. Again, based on the direction in Chapter 4, there really are no changes in Chapter 1, and we would recommend approval and available for any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Camps.
Move approval of staff recommendation of proposed changes in a way that is consistent with the way we just voted on Chapter 4 future land use.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Public hearing number five is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of year amendment 24-2: Overall Goals and Definitions. Ms. Nobby?
Thank you. Jen and Nobby, Senior Planner with the Growth Management Department. And this is a text amendment to Chapter 2: Overall Goals and Definitions of the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan based upon the 2024 year. And let me get to the staff report. So number 11 here, we originally had proposed to have the definition for housing units in actual use be deleted, consistent with the changes in 1 and 4. However, based on your direction, this definition for housing units in actual use would be retained, and it would not be deleted. And then same thing with number 16 and 17 here. The definition for seasonal house... Seasonal population housing would remain as is and no revisions to the definition. And vacant seasonal housing units would also be retained as it exists today, based on the direction in Chapter 4 and Chapter 1. We also recommend in Policy 2.4c1 here that the text remain as we're proposing for the 20-year planning period, to be consistent with Florida statute. And this staff analysis note, as with the rest of the chapters in the year, these would all be removed prior to adoption and everything that's just for your clarity in reviewing these items. But this would also... We're recommending the 20-year planning period be adopted. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All other changes shown in 2 are discussed in the staff report. They are minor changes.
Questions for Ms. Nobby? Mr. Campy?
Move to accept staff's recommendation with the changes or the other issues that our staff just mentioned.
Is there a second? Is there any public comment? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next public hearing is number 6: A Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Year Amendment 24-03: Intergovernmental Coordination Element.
Hello again. Clyde Doolin, for the record. With me is Stephanie Height with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. The RPC helped us with Chapter 6... I'm sorry, Chapter 3, 6, 16, and 17. There are all of the changes to this is... I'm sorry, I should... This is reopening of or continuation of a hearing. Public hearing started earlier. And so we have made the presentation on this already, and we're available for any questions. There are a couple of minor changes. Let's go to... 19... Whoops. So based upon action on March 11... Oh, no. Sorry, February. This text has been revised to describe the Environmental Lands Oversight Committee, thanks to help from Legal Department in drafting this text to update it. Staff... This is a change post since the work report was issued, and... But I think this will be a minor change that the state agencies will have no problem with. We recommend approval to this. And then another change on... The town of Jupiter Island and Martin County completed an interlocal agreement, and so we are recognizing that revised interlocal agreement here in this Policy 3.1e4. The board voted and approved this interlocal March 11. These are the two changes, I think, that have... The only two that have happened since the public hearing was conducted previously. And we would recommend approval of the proposed changes to Chapter 3. That concludes staff presentation.
Questions for staff? Is there any public comment? Any inclination to continue this item? Mr. Campy?
Thank you. I would make a motion that we... Are we still continuing to the end of the day?
No, we're approving.
We're approving. I would make a motion that we approve this agenda item as presented by staff.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Camps.
That's all. I was going to do the second. I'm good.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. We will now pick up public hearing number 7: A Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Year Amendment 24-06: Housing Element.
I will turn it over to Stephanie. Do you have... Which item? There's a new piece of text?
No, I think what we're going to do is, again, this is a reopening of the public hearing to approve this continuation from February 25. Due to your earlier vote on the future land use element, there was alternate texts that had been presented related to the vacant residential land use that will be stricken. It will remain as is. And then we'll also change the planning period to be a 20-year planning period. That's on 2269. But that alternative text, I believe, will be stricken.
The alternative text will not... Is not needed?
Is not going to be... Yeah.
So we just have the 20-year planning period there in that paragraph.
Questions for staff?
Just one other clarification from the February meeting you had asked us on Policy 61d37. Just to clarify that it's Florida statutes that's being... That's on page 2274. That Florida statutes is what's being referenced into that new policy.
Okay. Any questions? Any public comment? Any inclination to approve?
I will move staff's recommendation for approval and adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
This is a continuation of a public hearing that was opened previously. I don't believe we have...
There was just one recommendation. At February, the board had asked us to... We had referenced in one of the policies a particular project to support, the Stewart High School building. The chair had asked that we consider not being so specific in that and make it more general. We did check with Nancy Terrell at Martin Arts, and she said we'd find if that was removed. So we're just recommending that that previously recommended text not be added to the adopted.
Any questions?
It's unchanged.
Yes, the text will remain unchanged.
Is there any public comment?
I would make a motion to accept staff's recommendation for adoption as presented with the change about the Stewart High School.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next is Public Hearing Number 9: Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Year Amendment 24-17: Public Schools Facility Element.
No, actually.
This is a continuation of a previously opened public hearing. We have no additional changes to discuss. Staff recommends approval of adoption of Chapter 17 in Public Hearing 9.
Questions for staff? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to adopt year amendment 24-17?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next up is Public Hearing Number 10, which is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of year amendment 24-05: Transportation Element.
Normally, you see people running.
We can take up Public Hearing 11, which is Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Year Amendment 24-07.
I think they're ready for Chapter 5.
Okay.
Newer running.
Take up the transportation element. Is this old?
No. No, I'm sorry.
That's new?
No, 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 it's not.
Proceed, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Roselka, the county engineer. Transportation element, Chapter 5. We have... There's only been one change made since our last meeting, and it was in reference to the dredging of the Menantie Pocket deeper. It has been stricken from this addition. The other changes in the transportation element, really a lot of it were updates, and the several items with, you know, bringing it up to current standards with the DOT changing their context classifications and adding the whole element for pedestrian and bicycle safety.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions or...
Questions for staff? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? That motion passes 3 to 2 with Commissioners Vargas and her dissenting. Next up is Public Hearing Number 11, which is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of year amendment 24-7: The Recreation Element.
Clyde Doolin, for the record. This is a continuation of a public hearing opened earlier. There are minor changes proposed in Chapter 7: Recreation Element. There's some references to a feasibility study that are shown stricken. There's a proposed policy change acknowledging the fact that the capital improvements planning results in a review of beach access every year instead of every five years. There's removing the requirement for a beach... Studying beach user's place of origin. And there's recognition of the Village of Indian Town along with the city of Stewart and the school board for joint use of recreation facilities. Staff recommends approval of proposed changes to Chapter 7: Recreation Element.
Questions for staff? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to adopt the Recreation Element?
I'll move that we adopt the Recreation Element.
I will second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next up is Public Hearing Number 12: A Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Year Amendment 24-08: Coastal Management Element.
Doctor?
It would be so... It would have been so easy. Go along.
I think that's stolen valor. We're giving you an honorarium, say.
People are still calling it. It's okay. I'll take it.
Go to graduations now?
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Samantha Lovelady, Principal Planner with the Growth Management Department. This is a planned amendment that was continued to today on Chapter 8: Coastal Management Element. And I have Amy Eason with me, Dr. Amy Eason. And do you want to go over any changes? Or do you have any questions?
Any questions? No. Questions?
Yes, I do.
Commissioner Heatherington?
So referenced in here is the 2021. That's the first time we did the SLR, right? In 2021? Is that the first time the county ever implemented a SLR? So in here, it's referenced, the 2021 SLR. How often will that be updated?
It is being updated right now. So I have the final one right now in my review. It is fully funded by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and it will be submitted to them pretty soon, as soon as I finish my review, and then will be presented to the commission before.
So the project priorities, then, you know, although they are identified and probably are longstanding project priorities, they will be updated?
Yeah. So what I'm doing in the report is I'm going to put all of our current projects, the things that haven't been done in the last report, things that are thought about coming up, as well as looking at our current CIP, seeing which infrastructure does not comply or is vulnerable under the sea level rise projections. So I'm going to add those projects in there along with any other adaptation that we foresee to come in the future because by putting the projects in this vulnerability assessment that sets us up to receive Resilient Florida grant money. If it's not in the report, we're not going to get grant money. So those projects will be updated, and there will be a clause in there so that we're not constantly updating this report because the state continues to change their statute. There'll be a clause in there that says that our CIP will be reviewed every year and any CIP projects that are considered within those vulnerable areas will be automatically included in our vulnerability assessment.
Okay. So then the CIP then will control the funding. So the SLR will lay out the priorities, and now it's being referenced in this section of the comp plan. And then as we go through the CIP process, that's where we're going to prioritize the projects. Therefore, if the board changes its priorities, that would be done in the CIP, not necessarily in the SLR.
Correct. And then there is also a fully funded adaptation plan that is going to go along with it at the same time. It's interesting that the state wants the projects in the vulnerability assessment because that's really the report that tells you what assets are vulnerable versus what projects to do to keep those assets from being vulnerable. So there's an adaptation plan that is going to be done at the same time... Well, not the same time. Will be done this year and will be at, like, final draft by December to comply with those grant funds. And then that will set up everything moving forward.
Okay. And so if for some unfortunate reason the state is not funding some of these resiliency projects, we would adapt our CIP accordingly?
For prioritization. I mean, the idea is to look at your infrastructure that's vulnerable and look, as well as the lifespan of that infrastructure, and see when you start to hit those vulnerabilities so you're planning ahead. So you want to get those... That infrastructure that is critically vulnerable now, you know, prioritized first. And then as you look at the lifespan of infrastructure, let's say roads, for instance, that's typically a 20-year lifespan. If in 2045, that road becomes vulnerable, you want to make sure that the design of that road, when it comes up, is designed for the next cycle of sea level rise.
Okay. So I think that answered my question. I wanted to make sure there was a mechanism of changing the prioritization in the SLR or in the CIP without coming back to an amendment to the plan.
So, yeah, to the vulnerability assessment. Now, once we adopt our next vulnerability assessment, which is soon, I indicated at the last time I was here that I'd probably have to change the comp plan to, say, the new document. Yeah, so that it's... So that it's there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Any public comments? Is there a motion to adopt?
I would make a motion to adopt... Approve and adopt this agenda item as per staff's recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. And I still have reservations about shorelines, shoreline hardening particularly. So I'm not going to be supporting a motion. So there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? That motion passes 3 to 2 with Commissioners Vargas and her dissenting. Next is Public Hearing Number 13, which is a Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of the Year Amendment 24-09: Conservation and Open Space.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Samantha Lovelady with Growth Management Department. And do you want to do this? Okay. So there are a couple of changes that were made since the last time. We changed this policy. Let me see if I can get that bigger for you. It changed the Public Land Acquisition Program to the Environmental Lands Oversight Committee. And we have updated Table 9-1. We met with the Parks Department and the conservation people, and we've updated the names on some of them. The city strip got... That's no longer there, ours. And then, like, Jensen Beach, several of those were combined. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Has Palmar been updated with the latest information?
I don't believe we needed to change that.
Well, we just acquired some property. Is that included?
It does not reflect the swap to which I think you're referring.
I am.
I'm sorry?[1769.44]
It does reflect the exchange.
I was not aware.
Okay.
Well, I want to thank Real Property Staff and Park Staff for sitting down and going back over this table with us and making substantial changes.
Commissioner Vargas?
No, that was my question. Should we consider that, you know, request that information be put in from the Palmar swap that we just completed? We just approved of, rather.
I didn't know.
Further questions for staff? Is there any public comment? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move staff's recommendation to adopt.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Public Hearing Number 14 is a legislative public hearing to amend, to adopt Ear Amendment 24-10 Sanitary Sewer Services Elements.
Yes, ma'am. The biggest change is this, the planning horizon. We added a 10-year planning horizon for the feasibility of providing, and then, a new future construction and connections of onsite sewage and disposal system. The Sanitary Sewer are currently on a 20-year or more planning horizon.
I'm on page 4656, on Table 10-2, so we don't have any planning projections for the City of Stewart, or South Martin, or the Village of Indian Town?
Can you say that again, please?
We don't have any projections for 2035 or 2045, so in other words, we don't have the 10-year, and we don't have the 20-year?
No, ma'am.
My understanding, we reached out to them, and we didn't get a response back.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Any public comments? Commissioner Campy?
I'd make a motion to accept and approve staff's recommendation as presented with the, was there a minor change? No change.
Just that one policy change?
Yes, with that one policy change. Thank you so much.
And that was on the 20, the planning horizons?
Yes.
There's a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next is Public Hearing Number 15, a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of Ear Amendment 24-.
All right. Want me to take over?
Please.
Public Hearing Number 15, legislative public hearing to consider adoption of an evaluation and appraisal report based Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24-11, Chapter 11, Potable Water Services Element, 10-Year Water Supply Facilities Work Plan, a text amendment presented by Utility Staff and Samantha Lovelady. You are recognized. See how smooth that transition from chair to vice chair was? Transition of power, just like that.
And we should call your doctor, too, right?
I hardly knew.
Meanwhile, we should make sure the Commissioner Hurd is.
Yes. Good afternoon, Samantha Lovelady, Growth Management Department, and I have Ms. Anne Murray with me from Martin County Utilities. She's the county hydrogeologist. And the, there's one change. Again, it's for that 10, 15, and 20-year planning period, so I'm taking that to have direction that the 15 will come out, based on this morning.
I believe so, so there's consistency.
Yes. And other changes are to figures 111 and 112 regarding the service, regional utilities service areas, and this is changed because of the March 11th approval of the interlocal agreement with the town of Jupiter Island and South Martin Regional Utilities. This is 111, and this is 112, which is the reflection of the interlocal. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, anyone from the audience looking to address us? Also seeing none, back to the board.
I will move staff's recommendation for adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Heatherington for staff's recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Capps. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Hurd temporarily absent. Public Hearing Number 16, Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Evaluation and Appraisal Report Based Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24-12, Chapter 12, Solid and Hazardous Waste, a text amendment, be presented by Ms. Samantha Lovelady and Utility Staff. You get bundled into Utility Staff.
Thank you.
You are recognized.
Good afternoon, Samantha Lovelady, Growth Management Department. I'm here with Mr. Amerson, the Utilities Director, and there have not been any changes since, since your last public hearing on this element. With that, staff recommends approval.
16. Yeah. Any questions for staff? Any public comments? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move staff's recommendation for adoption.
I will second it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We voted on 15. Are you okay with that?
I'm here with Amy Eason again, and is there anything you want to go over? I don't believe there are any changes.
Yeah, there's no other changes. Last time when we presented it, we mentioned that when it originally went up to the state, the last part of this element, Section 13.6, was missing, but then we had responses from the state that we had no comments, so we made sure that it was included for this adoption.
Okay. We appreciate that. We're doing a little bounce back. Questions for staff? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I will move staff's recommendation for adoption.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Heatherington, seconded by Commissioner Capps, for Public Hearing Number 17, the ear for the Chapter 13 Drainage and Natural Groundwater Aqua for Recharge Element. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That motion carries 4 to 0 with Commissioner Hurd temporarily absent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item, Public Hearing Number 18.
Excuse me, Commissioner, can we go back to Chapter 14 in Public Hearing Number 2 and wrap up the whole ear? Because we continued that one.
Oh, I see. Chapter 18 is a whole new story. Yes, Chapter 14 or 4?
14.
We're going to go back. We had continued it. Public Hearing Number 14, Legislative Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Evaluation and Appraisal Report Based Comprehensive Plan Amendment 24-10, Chapter 10, Sanitary Sewer Services Element, a text amendment.
It's Public Hearing 2.
Public Hearing Number 2. Did I read the wrong one just now? I thought you said 14.
Well, it's.
It's Chapter 14.
Oh, Chapter 14, Public Hearing Number 2? You're back?
Yeah.
Public Hearing Number 2. We had continued it from earlier.
Okay.
So, you have to announce it, and then we're coming back to it, because we are wrapping.
We are coming back to Public Hearing Number 2, which is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of Ear Based Amendment 24-14 Capital Improvements Element.
Anything else you'd like to add to that?
No, I'm just here for comments. Thank you, Samantha Lovelady.
Any public comments? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'm willing to make a motion. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed with this?
No, we just continued contingent on Chapter 4 getting adopted, so we're just coming back. There was no changes.
Thank you. I would make a motion to accept staff's recommendation as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any public comment? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. That motion fails, or that motion passes 4 to 1 with Commissioner Hurd dissenting. We'll now take up Public Hearing Number 3, which is a legislative public hearing to consider adoption of Ear Amendment 24-04, Chapter 4, the Future Land Use Element.
We voted on that one.
That one's been voted on.
It has?
Yes.
Okay. That was adopted? I thought it was continued to.
No, that was adopted, so we're on Public Hearing 18, in order of the agenda.
Number 18 is a legislative public hearing to consider transmittal of Comprehensive Amendment 23-03 Sunrise Grove, a Future Land Use Map Amendment.
Is that an oral light?
No. We got.
Samantha Lovelady with the Growth Management Department. This is CPA 2303 Sunrise Grove, a Future Land Use Map Amendment. It is requested by Martin Triangle Property. The proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment is for 205 acres of agricultural ranchette to the AgTech Future Land Use Designation, which Sunrise Grove is in parentheses here because the text amendment companion to this is requesting to change the name to Sunrise Grove. The AgTech Future Land Use Designation created, was created in 2010 on 1,717 acres. No developed acreage, there's no developed acreage at this time. It has one approved PUD within 7.66 acres, and adding 205 acres with the Future Land Use Map Amendment will result in a total of 1,922 acres. This is the existing Future Land Use Map, and this is the aggranchette. The property is outlined in red, and this is the proposed future land use, which would be the same hatching as the AgTech Future Land Use. The property is located west of I-95 and north of southwest Martin Highway. There is a separate text amendment to create a 200, to add 205 acres to the AgTech Freestanding Urban Service District. In Section 2.1 of the staff report, one out of four criteria for the Future Land Use Map Amendment have been met. In Section 2.2, Urban Sprawl, 10 out of the 13 criteria have been met, saying that it does not create urban sprawl. And in Section 2.2.1, proliferational sprawl, seven out of eight criteria have been met that says this does not proliferate sprawl. And again, the name is being requested to change to Sunrise Grove, and one thing to consider is that it keeps the same performance measure with no increase in intensity for what they've already been approved. And staff recommendation is for a motion to transmit CPA 2303 Sunrise Grove. On February 20th, the local planning agency voted 3 to 1 to recommend approval. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions? Applicant?
I do have a brief PowerPoint for the record. My name is Morris Crady, Senior Partner with La Cita and Associates, and we did, or send out the notices and provided those at the LPA public hearing. And we did send out over 222 notices to surrounding property owners, and I have talked to one property owner that happens to be directly adjacent to our southwest corner, and she has no objection to this request after learning about the details. And she lives right here, actually, the lady that I'm talking about. But, as was mentioned, this is in addition to AgTech, and we're changing the name from Sunrise Grove based on the new ownership by Ashley Capital, and the 205 acres that we're adding is an enclave right now. It's stuck between the I-95 right-of-way and the AgTech existing land use. And just to give you some other context here, this is Citrus Boulevard. This is Newfield. It's under construction. This aerial doesn't show it, but there is a lot of construction going on right here, and I was able to walk the Kiplinger Trails in this area, which is outstanding set of trails that was built. And really, this project, Sunrise Grove or AgTech, by the previous owner, which was King Ranch, was something that was done in 2010 during the Great Recession, and also in response to canker and greening that occurred on the property. So, you know, the entire site is impacted. And one of the things that we were looking at at the time, and the county considered at the time, was its proximity to our neighbors to the north, which is the city of Port St. Lucie. And if you, as you can see here, this is the old GDC platted lots that they've been dealing with for years, and this is the newer development. And one of the things they've accomplished over the last 10 years since this application is, or since AgTech was created 15 years ago, is they have a successful jobs corridor. So, there's a lot of employment opportunities here, and they've been doing very well. So, the original developer worked out an arrangement with the city of Port St. Lucie to bring water and sewer to the site west of I-95 through the city of Port St. Lucie. And they're also going to build a connector road. So, they've been in negotiations to build a connector road to Becker Road, so that this economic opportunity that started in Port St. Lucie can bleed into Martin County, and we can capture some of that ad verum tax base with new economic opportunity. And as you can see, the initial development will probably start from the north to the south, given the proximity to Becker Road and the water and sewer and the connector road that's being built. So, we're not changing the original intent of AgTech. This is the language exactly from the Comprehensive Plan. It was intended to allow the continuation of agricultural opportunities, support development of targeted businesses, increase tax base and employment opportunities, and facilitate environmental enhancement through the protection of common open space and restoration of natural systems while protecting and enhancing the Martin Grade Scenic Corridor. So, all we're doing to these policies is changing the name from AgTech to Sunrise Grove. This is the existing land use map. Again, you can see the mixed-use village within the Newfield project here. There are industrial properties, the Seven Jays or Poma Industrial is here, and again, the aggranchette that we're adding to AgTech is located in this area. So, this is the existing freestanding urban service districts in the area. Again, this is the primary urban service district that was created by Newfield. This is the Seven Jays Freestanding Urban Service District, Martin Commerce Park that was recently added, and we're accessing the existing AgTech Freestanding Urban Service to add the 205 acres. And you can see in the 205 acres, this is a borrow pit that was dug by DOT during the construction of I-95 in the, in 1986, I believe it was completed in 1988. But what's interesting is that none of this was here when the comp plan was adopted in 1982. I-95 didn't exist. So, that's really the big change that occurred since the land use was created years ago. And the fact that AgTech now is creating an enclave. use was created years ago. And the fact that AgTech now is creating an enclave, you know, just makes it a natural connection or a change to make that land use consistent with AgTech. So really, the only usable area is this area right here. And it's without AgTech, access to this site would be very difficult and would, the only other permitted uses would be agricultural ranchettes. And homes right on 95 between AgTech or any type of ranch use would not be compatible, I don't believe, with what's changed over the years. So all we're doing with this text amendment is changing the name. We're also adding the 205 acres as a freestanding urban service district. And what that does is we're increasing the minimum open space in the site by 105 acres, from 817 acres to 939 acres. We're increasing the non-agricultural urban development, and that's the area where we can put actual buildings and urban type of development, by 105 acres, or I'm sorry, by 100 acres from 900 acres to 1,000 acres. And we're adding a use, which is vehicle manufacturing, sales, and service. So that's the only change to the text. What we are not doing is we're not increasing the maximum allowable.
This is the flume.
Well, it's all related. I think I have to kind of do it all at once because they're integrated, and this is the same presentation that we had before the LPA. So I'm just going to give one presentation, and then I don't need to do a presentation for the text because they're all kind of interrelated. If I may, if I may proceed. So we're not changing the maximum, even though we're adding 205 acres, we're not changing the maximum allowable intensity of development. Okay. All right, I'll come back. I'll come back to this. Well, no, it's on the same, it's on the same, it's only two slides. It's on the same.
Hang on to them.
Let me see. How do I go down here? So as far as the future land use amendment is concerned, you have four criteria. In my opinion, we meet two, the county staff. You only need one to approve the land use map amendment. And we all agree that the past changes in land use designations in the general area make the proposed use consistent, and that's AgTech. But I also think the growth in the area also supports the application, especially the growth to the north in the city of Port St. Lucie. It does, it has altered the character of the land and makes this site now suitable for economic development. And so as was mentioned, we meet 10 of the 13 applicable indicators that discourage the proliferation of urban sprawl, and we meet the additional criteria within that section of the code, seven of the eight indicators that also discourage the proliferation of urban sprawl. And again, you know, I can't say enough about Ashley Capital. King Ranch, at the time this was approved, they didn't have the experience or the wherewithal to actually make this project happen. The times that have passed, and now that with a new owner, Ashley Capital has the proven track record and a commitment to quality that I think can bring this project to fruition and create the types of ad valorem tax base that the county has been seeking. And with that understanding, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and then we can go on to the text amendment and the next application.
Question for the applicant. I have some comments to make. The 2023 commercial and industrial study that we undertook concluded that Martin County had twice as much vacant industrial as we do developed industrial. Therefore, any increase in industrial would be a mistake, a mistake that we should not make. Furthermore, AgTech was created in 2010. It's still undeveloped, which tells me that that change to AgTech was a mistake that we should not add on to. There are four criteria for creating a future land use amendment. The first is that past changes in land use designations in the general area make the proposed use logical and consistent with these uses, and there's adequate availability of public services. Definitely does not meet that. Two, that the growth in the area in terms of development of vacant land, redevelopment and availability of public services has altered the character of the area such that the proposed request is now reasonable and consistent with area land use characteristics, still undeveloped land, so it has not met that criteria. That the proposed change would correct what was otherwise, what would otherwise appear to be an inappropriately assigned land use designation. The inappropriately assigned land use designation is AgTech. And that the proposed change would meet a necessary public service need, which enhances the health, safety, or general welfare of county residents. It does not meet any of those requirements, therefore does not qualify for a comp plan amendment. It is the textbook definition of urban sprawl. It's the proliferation of urban sprawl. And what are our policies regarding expanding freestanding urban service boundaries?
I don't believe we have any about.
Then how could you make, how could you make a recommendation to expand the freestanding urban service boundary if we don't have any policies directing how, when we should expand a freestanding urban service boundary?
What I mean is that there are no current policies that restrict an expansion.
So we can expand, all the four freestanding urban service boundaries have no limits to their expansion?
That's up to the Commissioners. That's up to you.
Well, what's the policy? Current policy, because you're making a recommendation to expand a freestanding urban service boundary, which is a mistake. And the fact that it was approved in 2010 and still remains undeveloped confirms that that was a mistake?
As I said, we don't have any policies that restrict an expansion at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Campy?
Thank you, Chair. With all due respect, this is a historic example of where you and I agree to disagree. I was here then for AgTech in 2010. I'll give a brief history lesson for the folks that are newer to this situation. Citrus canker and greening rendered this property useless for its intended agricultural use. So King Ranch, which people might be familiar with, it's a pickup truck trim model based on a ranch in Texas, one of the largest ranches in the United States, probably in the world. I've heard it compared that the King Ranch is equal to the size of the state of Rhode Island. So they were also at the time one of the largest private property owners in Martin County. So when you're thinking about, like, who could step in and create a situation like this to make a successful run at it, it would have been King Ranch or consolidated Citrus. Mitch Hutchcraft was sort of leading the charge at the time, a real classy gentleman. Got his head handed to him by the opposition, which was strong at the time, very strong opposition, that just hated any type of a change. I voted for it because I figured if anyone could pull it off, especially how difficult it is to encourage businesses to come to Martin County or expand in Martin County based on how challenging we make the process, and sometimes rightfully so, they were the right ones. It was not their fault that a global recession, especially hard-hitting here in the United States that has now been termed the Great Recession. I don't begrudge them for that. I don't use that as, aha, look, it didn't work. Hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars spent for that process. Then magically, we are so fortunate as a community to have someone else take a look at that property and say, maybe there's something I can do. Now, without beating the drum for Ashley Capital, if I've said this in the past, it's very simple. All you need to do is Google Ashley Capital. Couple of partners run their whole entire operation completely different. They don't purchase, build, and flip. They don't purchase and flip. They purchase, they construct, design, construct, and lease the highest level Class A tenant leasable space that you can find, and then they maintain it themselves. For them to come in and step in to do this, they are absolutely the right people. So with all due respect to my colleague, when she says AgTech didn't work, so it will never, ever work, I don't see that as being really a fair assessment of what the future would look like. And if that were the case, should the rest of us throw our hands up and say, I guess we're not going to do anything ever again, we'll just let that property, they can continue to pay taxes on it, but we won't do anything today? So this AgTech versus should this be a site of industrial development or not, has been long debated many, many times in this very room and elsewhere in the community. I'm for it. The recession and COVID has taken big chunks of the last decade or 15 years out of this process. Let's talk about, and I would prefer, Ms. Love Lady, if you could go back to the slide, I think it might have been in your presentation, Mr. Crady, where you showed what's happening north of our county line. Can you go back to it, please? Or do you have the ability to show it? That. Now, we obviously all know what Port St. Lucie looks like, the portion that's Becker Road. Believe it or not, that's not a quilt. That's actually neighborhoods. That's how close those homes are to each other. But where it says jobs corridor to the left or the west of I-95, that big green open space, this is probably an older aerial. A lot of that has been developed. So people say, well, we don't want the traffic. We don't want the commuting happening through our county. They, in St. Lucie and Port St. Lucie, they are eating our lunch in terms of luring and expanding businesses. Businesses from the south of us in Palm Beach County, I'll give you an example, Chaney Brothers, they bypass, they hopscotched right over Martin County into St. Lucie County. I would guess tens or hundreds of their employees are now traveling through the entire Martin County on their way to St. Lucie County. So in terms of, hey, we're going to try to knock traffic down or eliminate truck traffic or anything else, we're not doing that. They're passing right through our community. What they're taking with them is all the tax base. So if you said, well, I don't want anything else to happen in Martin County, I get that concept. Nobody wants anything else to happen to here, but we also expect and deserve a very high level of services. We had the sheriff's office here this morning, fire rescue's been here. Some of our new colleagues are really rightfully so, right on the fact that we need additional fire rescue services. We are going to need fire stations. This particular applicant in a different portion, but to speak to the benefit of the corporation that's willing to invest hundreds of millions of dollars in our community, they're willing to participate. They're not just, you know, hey, some out-of-state hedge fund that is looking to do business and just cash out on our residents. They're completely invested in our community, hired locals to work on this project. If we don't do something in this exact corridor, then everything goes into St. Lucie County with all the tax dollars. You've heard me say before that we are completely lopsided in our tax base. Residents want high level of services, but they can't write the check for every single one of them. Most sort of balanced-out communities, economic communities, understand you have to have a larger percentage of commercial and industrial, 10, 15, 20%, depending on who you speak to. We're in the low single digits here, meaning the burden of taxation is completely on residents. Here we have an opportunity in what I would think, it's in my district. I think it's in a perfectly located, imagine trucks coming and going directly off one of the busiest roads in the United States of America, right onto this property. Yes, they're asking for the 205 to be included into the existing previous designation. I have walked that property with the previous owner. He's a local guy from Palm City. He's owned it for a long time. He has, over the last 10 years, presented to me dozens of what he would consider great ideas. Most of them, just having heard them, I would tell him, that's a terrible idea. That would never fly. The folks in Stewart, Weston, Cobblestone would never go for that. And then he would come up with another one. And look, people were interested. And I'd say, that would never work. And then it would die, and it would die. So he finally got an opportunity to sell those 205 acres to Ashley Capital to turn it into hopefully Sunrise Grove and to incorporate it into this, I think, a beautiful potential project for Sunrise Grove and Ashley Capital to bring businesses that we can be proud of. We're employing our residents. We're building a tax base. We're not stressing out our infrastructure. These folks that are going to work here are not running to the beaches, the libraries, the school districts. It's, we heard Jenny Fields this morning talk about 3% cap. It's not the same. And where a majority of this tax base will come from is TPP, tangible personal property, that they're paying not so much for the real estate taxes. They're paying for the equipment that's located within these buildings. I personally think and would hope that the five of us would roll the red carpet out for someone willing to come to our community, invest hundreds of millions of dollars to even up our tax base and lessen the burden on our residents by creating a project just like this. It was appropriate in 2010. We just had someone that through no fault of their own couldn't figure out how to do it. We have someone that has proven, one of the top businesses in the United States, willing to do this right here. The principal is sitting in this very room, listening to the ups and downs and the barbs and how ridiculous this could be from colleagues. And I want him to also hear that some of us are very, very appreciative that he would take this chance on our community. And so with that, I would happily make a motion to accept staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Heatherington?
I was going to ask the applicant first a brief historical account, but I think Commissioner Campy just gave the brief historical account on how, because I wrote down a couple notes about why it was undeveloped for 2010, which I've had a chance to meet with the applicant a number of times. And that was my first question, why now? And there was also supposed to be a transportation corridor that went through that area. And I sat on several transportation meetings where St. Lucie County, they approved a development that completely blocked that transportation corridor from coming through there. And I know that the owner of the property had been working diligently to get us a connection for that transportation corridor as well as their utility. So I don't think I need the applicant to go through the background since Commissioner Campy just did. I will say too that I think that agranchet next to that, that was approved in 2010, this land use, and the 205 acres next to it, agranchet, to me would not fit right next to I-95. And then the jobs corridor, you just summarized, you know, the importance of the economic diversity in our county. And I will say firsthand, part of the reason that I'm sitting up here is because at times Martin County has had a lack of economic diversity because we've been afraid to implement a policy that might impact industrial areas or growth. And if we look at what has happened somewhat in Indian Town, US CoGen came, you know, years and years ago. There was, that was an industrial area that hired hundreds of employees. Well, we know that's gone. FPNO, that plant is gone. Those are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of jobs that disappeared over the last 20 years. Not to mention that we've lost all of our citrus and those kind of jobs, but those jobs that disappear, those people are generational residents that are leaving this area. And one in particular happens to be my sister and her husband. They had jobs at those plants, and they had to move to Pennsylvania because we had not, even in the surrounding areas, we had no additional jobs. So, and they're not coming back. They're not coming back now. They've established roots and families and their grandchildren, and they would have rather stayed right here in Martin County and taken those jobs. So I will support the creation of good jobs and economic diversity in our economy because not only is it good for the taxpayer, it's good for our residents, it's good for our. not only is it good for the taxpayer, it's good for our residents, it's good for our families. This makes sense to me to incorporate it, and it's right on 95. It doesn't make sense to develop it as an ag ranchette, and I will, I echo what your sentiments on, I think, is equality individuals, the owners, and they have worked really hard. And I have seen on this transportation committee that it is not, it was not been an easy task, all of the complicated challenges, to get this property, and I would imagine that you probably have spent millions of dollars to work on these things. So with that, because of the Jobs Corridor, and I think the ag ranchette makes more sense, bordering I-95 to be this particular land use, I will second Commissioner Campy's motion.
Commissioner Vargas.
Okay. Nothing is guaranteed. We are headed for financially difficult times, believe it or not. My colleagues have expressed that this is a no-fail situation, tangible personal property, jobs, widened tax base. However, I have grave concerns for the environmental and the infrastructure in the area, there's no preservation of the rural character, and there's no consistency with the growth plan. It's more intensive development. Again, I have to, I have to applaud Chairwoman Hurd for enumerating the points that are very valid, and I urge this Board of County Commissioners to think very clearly and not be swayed emotionally, or for other reasons that may not be known to us at this time.
Mr. Capps.
I think this is a close one for me. We've heard great arguments on both sides, very cogent arguments. The arguments that I think that have been most persuasive to me are the ones that were made by Chair Hurd, which, her central point is that we have plenty of industrial land available at this time, so I don't think this is the time to be expanding freestanding urban services boundaries in Martin County. So I won't be able to support it.
Commissioner Campy.
I appreciate my colleagues giving their assessment. I think what potentially is lost in the conversation is when you hear my colleague, Commissioner Hurd, discussing that there's been a report that shows there's plenty of unused industrial land available elsewhere in the county, could very well be true. However, there's no one actively looking to do anything on those properties. So for the next three, four, five years, even with what this applicant has been able to do, and remember, this is just a portion, we're trying to bring in 205 acres, that really has no other specific use, this would, in my opinion, obviously my opinion, would be the most logical to incorporate it into what's already been able to happen there, versus if the owner decides, look, I'm going to, I'm going to sell it, our staff will be tasked with, what could it be? I'm sure it can be something beyond exclusively homes, otherwise you're forcing someone to just own it. No one's building five-acre ranchettes on the, on the cusp of, on the side street of 95. And with that in mind, the concept that there's plenty of industrial could be. But here is a legitimate, bona fide applicant who has a proven track record of doing this. I understand my colleagues and I respect the difference of opinions. Sometimes it goes in my favor and sometimes it doesn't. I have no idea what my colleague means by, I guess we'll figure out if something else is at play, I don't know what that might be, I won't even attempt a guess. But that being said, when we are here discussing taxes and paying for services and creating parks, infrastructure, library, infrastructure, fire rescue, infrastructure, or the sheriff comes looking for money for a needed helicopter, these are the pivotal historic decisions that make it easier for our residents to live the lifestyle that they choose and more difficult. If we run off all of these larger taxpayers, the smaller taxpayers have to pay. Because what's the harder decision than what we're making today is telling groups of people, whether they're Little League, football, libraries, organizations, we can't do it. Because they don't want to hear it. They don't want their taxes raised, I don't want mine raised either. This is a logical step in the right direction. So, I mean, short of hearing from the principal himself, I don't know, I see he's moved to the front of the room, short of hearing that, I will accept my victories when we have them, and I'll accept my losses when we have them, and we'll see what this means, but I appreciate the process.
Is there any public comments? Please come forward.
I'll finish this right after.
I have, I have this one, this will suffice.
Will that?
Yeah.
We'll double it?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm not wasting that one for this one. I guess my question is probably to the chair and staff. Looking at the map, it is right off the I-95 corridor. My question, I'm sorry, Gary Earl, Port Salerno. My question is, these trucks in these industrial areas, of course, if it's industrial, there's traffic and movement. The industrial areas are, I know there's light industrial on US-1, there was one recently approved last year under the old commission, right off of 95, I believe it's either just north or just on the other side of that. From a public standpoint, and I'm only one guy, this is a fit. This is as close to 95 as you can get. I mean, you're going to get one traffic light and you're northbound, southbound. That, thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Wait, wait.
Oh yeah, can you restate the motion? It's been a while. You want me to restate it?
Oh, you made the motion, right? Okay, I see, okay.
It feels like a different, different agenda item.
One other comment. For the record, Bob Rains here on behalf of the applicant. I think one thing is getting lost, and I appreciate the comments from the gentleman, from the public, because I think he made a really, a really good point, and that is, what's really before you is, not whether we need more industrial or not, that's, that's part of it, but the question is, what's the most appropriate land use designation for this piece of property now that 95 has been built and you have AgTech? So that's really, I think, the question that's before you. It's not so much as to whether, you know, we need more development or not. We, I can sit here and make some arguments why the industrial development, it's the location of a lot of this vacant industrial development. So I think that needs to be brought out. That's really the question, what's the most appropriate land use designation for this property now, based on what's happened in the past? And I would submit to you that what's there now, and you have a gentleman from the public, I think it was astute enough to pick up on that. So I just wanted to make that point before you finally take a vote.
There's a motion for staff and a second for staff's recommendation, all those in favor.
Can we restate the motion?
I was making a motion.
Staff's recommendation for approval, and I second it, okay.
Correct.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Opposed.
The motion fails two to three with Commissioners Vargas, Capps, and Hurd dissenting. So finished with.
Do you want to go forward to change the name? In the next public hearing? Sorry, Commissioner, I just see them getting up.
But it's on the.
It's on the whole project.
200 acres.
Not just that.
We can, yeah.
The text change is to change the name of all of it.
Right. So we can change the acreage if they, we can adjust the acreage if we present the hearing, if they want to move forward, but if not, that's fine too.
We're not increasing the acreage.
Right.
It's just a name change at this point.
We need to look at the text to make sure we're not expanding it to 205. Do you have the board item separate from?
It says that it would add 205 acres to the existing 1717 acre freestanding urban service district, so I don't believe that this has been advertised.
The text amendment was advertised, and it lists that, what you just described, Commissioner, but it also describes a proposed change in the name and the permitted use. So you could consider that a text change that did not include the 205 acre expansion.
Correct, because we're.
That's not all we have before us.
Commissioner, if I, if I could, for the, for the record, again, Bob Rains on behalf of the applicant. I believe it's, it's the same, and I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, I understand, I just want to have an opportunity to explain it if I can, I appreciate that, thank you so much. It's, it's, it would be like, for instance, if we were asking for a more intense use and we were going to come in for, and you were changing it to a less intense use, that's allowed. If we were coming in and asking for a less intense use and we tried to change it after the notice to a more intense use, we couldn't do that. So I believe we could move forward with the changes that we want to make, which are the, the one use and the additional name change, without having to move forward with, you can say we're not approving the 209 acres because it's.
It's all been advertised.
It's all been advertised. But you can take it off the table, you can't, we couldn't add 209 acres if we were here. That's, that's my legal thoughts on it anyway.
We're in uncharted water here, so. Commissioner Vargas.
I just want clarity, so what we're, what the request is right now is to change the name of which parcel?
The, Commissioner, again, for the record, Bob Rains, the existing AgTech property.
So we're talking about the 1700?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Plus acres?
Yes, what exists today, not the additional 209 or whatnot, that, that, that sold yesterday, last item. So we're just asking for, we would then be asking now for a name change and for the additional use we're requesting, and not the addition of 209 acres.
Correct, so the name change would be to the, the future land use designation, so instead of being called AgTech, it's going to be called Sunrise Grove. So it would be the property that they're, it would be applicable to the property there now.
So you just want to change the name?
Yes, ma'am.
And.
Correct, the name, yes, ma'am, the name, and then there is one use also that we were asking to add to it.
What was that use?
Vehicle manufacturing, sales and service.
Right.
I think we need to separate that.
Members of the board, may I suggest we open the public hearing and then do the presentations?
I would agree.
I'm real unclear how we should proceed with this.
I think we need to.
Commissioner Campy.
Well, I, I can sense that you have confusion, however, our staff attorney has said she feels comfortable bringing it forward, the applicant's attorney feels comfortable bringing it forward. Yeah, that's exactly how it works. When our attorney, a legal professional, gives me legal advice, that's how it works. That's why they're here. Otherwise, we can just be up here freestyling.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes, okay. I do need clarification. So we're changing the name because they want to change the name, is that correct?
So they, they are proposing an ordinance that changes the name, that adds another use, and that included the additional acreage. The board already did not approve the additional acreage. We can treat this like we treated all the comp plan amendments today, where we didn't include language that wasn't approved in Chapter 4. It's kind of the same concept, you're just going to eliminate that additional land that they're trying to add to AgTech. So right before you will be the name change and the use, and you can approve both, or one, or none, it's up to the board, whatever you desire, if that makes sense. But we've been doing it all day with Chapter 4, so it's the same concept.
Okay, and so the use is not something that, right now, the property has?
Correct.
What use do they want?
Ms. Love, Ms. Love Lady's going to present all the changes to the ordinance, so she'll be able to explain it further.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioner Samantha Love Lady with Growth Management. This is CPA 2304 Sunrise Grove text amendment, excuse me. And this is a request by Martin Triangle Property and Sunrise Grove Commerce Center. It's a site.
And Martin Triangle Property is the 205 acres.
So they're out.
Mm-hmm, they're out.
By them.
And Sunrise Grove.
It's a request to change the name, to change the name from AgTech to Sunrise Grove for the freestanding urban service district that is existing today. It would also add a permitted use to the AgTech policies in Policy 4.13A.9. And these policies, again, are a name change and adding a use, and Policy 4.7813 was for consistency, also Section 4.2. A for internal consistency, but that acreage is, and that policy would not change. There would be no change to Figure 4-2, which is this figure here. The request was to add this acreage onto 4-2, but you did not approve that, and, I believe, staff recommendation is for you to approve the name change and add the permitted use on the 1,717 acre property.
Commissioner Capps.
I'm ready to make a motion to, for both, to change the name and to add the permitted use.
Second.
Yes, this is for transmittal to the state land planning agency.
Yes.
It would still need to come back to you for adoption.
We would remove all references to expanding the freestanding urban service district from the proposed text before it gets transmitted to the state.
Commissioner Vargas.
Yes, so the, I need to clarify in my mind, if I may, Ms. Elder.
Yes.
The use presently, because now they're looking for a different designation of use, is that what I'm understanding?
They're asking for an additional use on the property, which is vehicle manufacturing, I believe, so there's other uses that are permitted in the land use designation, so they're trying to add one more. And I think Clyde is bringing it up on the screen, what's allowed right now. So they just want to add one use, which is the vehicle maintenance to the list. So that's not allowed right now, so they want to add it as a possible use.
And ma'am, on the screen, there are the existing permitted uses for that future land use designation.
Are they going to be constructing cars there?
Would permit, it says, it says, it says vehicle manufacturing, sales and service.
Okay, so there'll be, it'd be a factory?
Well, no, there's, there's nothing planned now, that is a permitted use, and we're adding it in response to the proliferation of E vehicles, electric vehicles, which is, you know, something that could be manufactured on site, there's no intention to have a, you know, a regular car manufacturing. But there are E bikes and E vehicles that are, it's, it's a new technology, and they want to be able to, to allow that on the property if we have someone that wants to do that type of manufacturing.
So the uses would be limited to 5 million square feet of warehouses, plus a, some car manufacturing and car dealerships?
Not plus, you have your maximum cap on what can be.
Okay, so 5 million square feet of warehouses, including car manufacturing and dealerships in western Martin County. Okay? There's a motion in this, would anyone from the public like to address us? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
That motion passes three to two with Commissioner Vargas and Hurd dissenting. Let's take a 10-minute break.
This is our final agenda item. It's Department Three approval of an as-is purchase contract and adoption of a resolution approving and accepting a special warranty deed for the acquisition of a parcel of property in off Salerno Road in Port Salerno. Ms. Johns.
I'm Elise Elder, Deputy County Attorney. Before we begin, Commissioner, so Departmental Three is consideration of a contract for the purchase of property between the county and Christina Walden-Fortin, also known as Christina Walden-Fortin Ardego. She's on one of our NACs. So under Florida statutes 112313, if there's a conflict of interest, the good thing is that under that same statute, it provides an exception where the board can waive that conflict upon two-thirds vote of the board. So we need a motion from the board to waive any potential conflict from purchasing property from an NAC member. It's a completely waivable conflict under the statute. And then we would need that to pass by two-thirds vote, which is for commissioners, before we can vote on the item.
Okay.
So staff.
Staff recommends providing authorization to waive the conflict of interest requirement is our recommendation, and then we'll hear the regular item. You'll still have the opportunity to discuss the item in full.
Correct. This is just to hear the item.
Commissioner Heatherington.
I'm sorry, Elise. You're going to have to go back a little bit. To waive the conflict, why wouldn't you do that like in a Form AB or something like that?
That's a good question. The statute's very clear on how you have to do it. The board has to do it at the hearing prior to a vote on the item that has the conflict. You have to do it at the public hearing. It has to be by two-thirds of the vote. So the board is actually waiving Mrs. Ardego's conflict. She can't waive it herself. The board has to waive the conflict for her. So that requires a board vote at the public hearing. So there's no form involved. It's a procedure that's done at the public hearing, and it's for all advisory board members. It's a common exception, so it's recognized under Florida law, so it's just, it's really a matter of procedure.
Mr. Capps.
I move that we waive the conflict. Is that the way to crack right to state that?
Waive the conflict for the seller of the property, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Campy.
Let me start off by saying, with all due respect to my colleagues, if this was happening anywhere else and led by anyone else, this throws up a ton of red flags to me. This woman, I don't know her. She's not an employee. This is her property. She sits on the NAC. This deal is obviously, I'm only hearing about it recently, but this deal has been pending. She could have easily resigned from the NAC. I think it sends, I go to my NAC meetings, how are we going to waive and so that the county can buy property from someone who sits on the Port Salerno NAC? It's her property, and we're going to participate in, as Commissioner Heatherington was saying, she's not waiving it herself, we're waiving it for her. And under different set of circumstances, I'd be getting my head handed to me if this was my idea. I am not supporting that decision.
It makes me very uncomfortable.
I didn't even know we were going to talk about that. The regular agenda item makes me concerned. This, what message does that, we're always talking about transparency and doing the right thing. We're going to allow a member of the NAC to sell her property to the county, and we're going to vote to waive her conflict. It is a conflict. She's on the NAC. This whole agenda item has a lot of issues. That one is a nonstarter, in my opinion. If you can rustle up everybody else.
Commissioner Capps.
This exception right here?
Yes.
Can we put it on a screen and maybe have somebody read it? It seems to be like a hand-in-glove application to this situation.
I'm chair. If I may, so normally if this would be part of the agenda item, unfortunately, and our staff and our, we've been negotiating back and forth on this property for, I think, about a year. The first time there was a suggestion that this might fit, and it wasn't until recently that we were able to complete a contract. In the preparation of this, in negotiation staff, we were unaware that they, that the Public Works Department in working on it did not know the individuals on the NAC at the time. So ultimately, it's my responsibility, if you will, that this did not come forward with the proper waiver beforehand. And the attempt to continue on with this item, we would like to, in order for it to even be considered, the statute is also clear in talking to our county attorney, that you can't even consider the acquisition of it without first passing this first piece. So if, you know, my suggestion would be if you are uncomfortable or need other time, then we would need to perhaps bring this back at the next agenda. Otherwise, you know, our recommendation is the same piece would still apply. There's certainly a valid, we believe, reason for acquisitions of this project in the district, and we do support that. I apologize that the proper forms were not completed in terms of identifying this waiver prior to the agenda item coming forward, and I'll take responsibility for that.
Commissioner Vargas.
As a licensed real estate broker, which I am still, this is not an arms-length transaction. It'd be as if, it'd be as if I asked the county to buy one of my personal properties, and I didn't disclose I was on the commission. You know, people don't know who's on the NAC. I mean, they know I'm on the commission. And I do have to, I do have to agree with my fellow commissioners, Mr. Campy and Ms. Heatherington. Also, I would be, I'd be reticent about going forward with this at this point. I know it's been worked on for quite a while, but it's not like the lady resigned, you know, before the contract was drawn up. This may not be a terrible property to purchase, and I did look at the appraisals, and sometimes it's difficult, you have to add and subtract for variances, but I think we really need to put the brakes on this today and take a real, real good look and a step back.
Ms. Woods.
Okay, well, I can certainly see where this is going, which is too bad. This is, this is a lovely piece of property that would be an extreme asset for Port Salerno to have. This is in the old part of Port Salerno, which is a traditional mixed-use area. It's very old and developed and platted, and there's not much green space. There's very, very little, and the little that there is, is not available to the public. So this was going to be a really important parcel of a public acquisition of green space for what I think will eventually be a pretty densely developed part of Port Salerno. And I'm familiar with some of the large cities in the world, and I think that what makes those places livable is their beautiful green spaces, their beautiful park spaces. And it was my intention just to provide an inimitable green space in Port Salerno. So I'm disappointed that it's, it's not going forward.
Commissioner Campy.
First, a question. Are we discussing the conflict of interest, or are we discussing the agenda item? And secondly, if we are going to discuss the agenda item, which it seems like we were, I went back, I'm struggling to believe my ears, because I went back to watch the agenda items where I was looking to purchase the acreage in Palm City to stop 90 apartments from being built, and green space, which is what the neighborhood and I would have preferred, was never even allowed to be on the table. When we discussed the agenda item for the referendum, I spoke of if we only buy, and I like all of the properties that were targeted with the sales tax referendum, but I asked about, we have to also protect the few remaining green spaces within the communities that we needed to protect them. And a couple of weeks ago, when I was here trying to re-enhance Charlie Leighton Park to keep that as a green open space with river access for all of us in Palm City that don't have any access to the water, that passed three to two with passionate reasons why that shouldn't count. So I'm just surprised that when I came forward with something for District Five, it was completely dismissed as not even an option and passed by the skin of its teeth. And now I'm hearing how wonderful this project was. This is the first I've ever heard of this, and when it became an agenda item. The Palm City property was discussed at an agenda item when we talked about doing the deal. Then when we got the appraisals, they were discussed and voted on. Then when we did the RFQ, then when the RFQ comes back, we probably heard that five times. This is the first time I've ever heard about this. I'm hearing our administrator say it's been negotiated for a year. And the frustration for me is that when someone spoke this morning, the NAC board, who we task as volunteers to handle these situations, didn't want to do it. And it seems a little controversial. So with all due respect, I get it, but, you know, remember those things countywide, not just in our own backyards. Because I would love to support these projects. My frustration wasn't on necessarily the project. There was questions that we could have asked. This woman could have just easily resigned from the NAC. She's not an elected official. She could have easily resigned, and then we wouldn't have been even having this conversation. We would have debated the up and down of whether this should have happened in Port Salerno. Why wouldn't she have resigned? And I don't blame you, Mr. Donaldson. It makes perfect sense that someone couldn't be negotiating something that they're part of. It sends, literally sends the worst messages to every other NAC member, would be like, well, wait a second. I'm on the NAC because I'm a property owner. I didn't realize I could sell it and have sort of an inside track. Not that this woman necessarily had that, but a little more tuned in than the average citizen. So this whole thing is the Twilight Zone.
Mr. Capps.
Yes, the reason I made the motion to waive the conflict was because we have clear language right in the statute here. Very, very clear language. And also because the transaction is well-supported by the other appraisals, which are below the asking price. You know, so it's not like we're doing something shady here. There's plenty of evidence to suggest that the deal is solid, and, you know, and I also think that district commissioners should have broad discretion over their district funds. And Commissioner Hurd thinks this is important for Port Salerno, and I'm glad to support her in her aspiration to have green space in the downtown area of Port Salerno. I think it'd be a beautiful addition to Port Salerno. So I, I hope that something can be done. And Commissioner Vargas, I would encourage you to read this statute that's yellowed in right here. I mean, you've got clear support. They made this exception for a reason, you know, and it's, it's a good, it's a good deal. We should do it.
Thank you. Mr. Ehrler, would you like to speak with us, to us?
On this part, I'm sorry. On the agenda item or the?
Not the agenda item, the conflict.
Not the agenda item. Okay. Mr. Donaldson had said that they've been in negotiations for over a year. Christina Ardego was put on the NAC by a 5-0 vote. Unknowns that, first of all, that this was a deal from a year ago. I've personally seen this on a couple different plans. It's been a parking lot, now it's green space. There's been other things. It's been a residence since 1945. It needs to either remain that way, and you're, I read through the appraisals, everything to get that appraised value calls for improvements on the property. The structure itself is not worth anything. It's 1945. Towny tax collectors have it at $173,000. That's basically what she pays tax on, and that's, that's straight from Jenny Fields. She's owned the property 10 years. She doesn't homestead it. I'm not arguing the fact of the green space. If it was green space, we wouldn't have an upland facility at Manatee Park, right on the water. I'm sorry. I will speak on the other item once we get to that. Thank you.
Commissioner Capps.
Yes, the public speaker mentioned Jenny Fields' tax number on the Property Appraisers website. Those numbers are always drastically lower than taxable value, or fair market value of a property. I mean, if you, if you envision to yourself, you know, what is my house worth? You might say $500,000. You go to Jenny Fields' website, and it'll be worth, you know, like $375. Those numbers are way lower than, than fair market value. So you can't go by that.
Understandably so, sir, on a, on a homesteaded property that it doesn't continue to rise. This property increases in value every 10, she's owned it for 10 years.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, we've come to the end of our meeting. Time for Commissioner comments. Commissioner Vargas.
Okay, I think that I'm good right now. Yeah, thank you.
Well, we made a motion.
Are we still voting?
Well, it failed for lack of a second or something.
Okay, it just kind of petered out there.
Clearly, it's the chair's prerogative on how the meeting moves forward. The item that required a vote, there was a motion, and there was, it needed a second to have the vote, so I assume it dies, and you, it's the chair's prerogative whether you can, you either continue on discussing this or end the conversation, and it ends the meeting. That's my interpretation.
Mr. Capps.
Is there any way to continue this issue to another meeting? Like, perhaps the seller would figure out a way to overcome this concern that some of the commissioners have here today, and maybe the deal could come forward on a future agenda?
There's nothing that would restrict us from being able to put it back on the agenda with more details on either situation, or if the situation changes, that we could also bring it back. So yes, I don't believe it needs to be continued. It's just a departmental item, so we could, we could put this back on again.
Commissioner Vargas.
So I've read this three times. I read it before the meeting, just letting you know. And I'm looking at it as a business person and also a real estate professional, and I understand the legal aspects to it. Is the seller going to resign from the board?
At this time, all we have are the facts that are before us. If the facts change or some other reason to bring it back, we would put it on the agenda. But there's no other information I can give you other than the fact is of, of the disclosure requirement and the vote that was required.
Yes, I understand, but, you know, whoever, I guess it'd be Chairwoman Hurd, since it's her area, might she speak with her and say, you know, we have a problem here? And, and she can look at the video and see our discussion back and forth if Chairwoman Hurd would like to go forward and pursue this property. So, I mean, something needs to be configured here, worked here, you know, divulged here, you know, transparency and all of that.
Yeah, I promise you, the staff will work with our chair, and if we can, if there's a means to bring it back that can alleviate the concerns, we will.
Thanks. Commissioner Campy.
If it were to come back, I'd like to have a legal opinion on if she negotiated the deal while she was on the board. That's where the conflict was. If she negotiated while she was on the board and then resigned, then I need to know, I'm not a lawyer, and I always say that I value our lawyers' opinions. If the conflict already happened, then just because she now steps off, if that's, if my legal department says, look, we worked that out, it's fine. Bring it back, we'll have an actual discussion on whether this is the appropriate purchase or not. And I value district opinions within the district from the commissioner of that district, but that's a two-way street, because it never works for me.
Mr. Capps.
Commissioner Campy called for a legal opinion on a matter. Maybe, maybe we can get one right now.
So the statute provides that the waiver occurs right before the vote, so I think we're okay with the negotiation happening. I will double-check that, but based on the wording of the statute, that the conflict is waived right before the board takes action, I think what we've done to date is perfectly legal. If she resigns, potentially, we could come back. That's up to staff to talk to her.
Do you need a 4-0 then, or no?
No, because potentially, there'd be no more conflict, but I will definitely double-check all that before we come back to the board.
I can't say we don't have a lawyer on the board anymore. We do actually have a lawyer.
Yes, and Mr. Gordon just pointed out, once she sells the property, she can't be on the NAC anyway, because she doesn't live in Port Salerno, most likely, so it might work its way out anyway.
I don't know her. She might be lovely. I'm just saying, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's Person X. It's just crazy.
Commissioner Vargas.
In the future, to avoid this, Mr. Donaldson said, could we double-check and see the background of the folks that want to sell property, or we have negotiations with them about real property, as it pertains to the county?
Yes, we've already talked to staff about having a form and an affidavit required by every contractor or potential seller, that they would have a conflict waiver signed before we would bring it to the board, so that we will, we've already put that in place.
Commissioner comments at the end of the meeting.
Well, so it's not, it's, nothing's dead yet.
Nope.
That's all I have to say. But let me get on the real estate negotiations next time.
Any further comments? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campy?
I'm okay.
Commissioner Heatherington?
I'm all set.
And Mr. Donaldson?
I'm good.
Ms. Woods?
I'm set.
It's the end of the meeting. Any public comments? We are adjourned.